Alright, everybody. It's 5:30 PM. I'd like to call this Open Space Committee regular meeting Wednesday, June 5th, 5:30 PM, at the Prime Time Building in Dayton, Massachusetts to order. So. At this time, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is introduction of committee members. Will we start one end go to the other? Unless anybody has any objections. Mr. Gail, would you like to start?
Sure, my name is Jonathan Gale. I am the ADA coordinator for the town of Dayton and a member of the committee.
Good evening, Leonard Hall.
Good evening, Robert Gere, I'm the committee chairman.
And good evening, I'm Dan Kabelna, I'm the committee clerk.
Alright, so announcements, we'd like to mention that the Cowship Festival did take place over this past weekend, hosted by the Dayton Lion Club. Looks like lots of people had a great time. And it is memorialized and on the internet if anybody would like to see photographs. Onto old business. We have discussed, reviewed, and act. We've had applicant update, Mr. Morey's application. If anybody would like to, I can bring the table and update unless anybody has any feedback, but we did, I did follow up with Mr. Morey via email. So that way we could keep it on record. And if his response gave any questions or inquiries or pushback, or you know, if there was an accessibility issue, we could address that, right? So it would just be a phone call that went out into nowhere. But I did not receive a reply to our email. Nor did Town Hall receive a completed application. So that's the update we have there.
So are we?
Yes.
We're just gonna keep posting, keep the post up there indefinitely, I think. I would recommend that because we are a committee of five. So we are, until we have someone, and hopefully none of us drop off, we will still have a vacancy. So I would make a motion that we keep our application process open until we receive an applicant. And that we ask the Board of Selectmen to add this to their announcements at every meeting until we tell them otherwise that there is an opening for open space for someone to join.
I will second it with discussion. First of all, I would ask, Mr. Gail, if you could, in that motion, include a date, a specific date, so it would be reposted. And then there'd be a closing date. What you don't want to do is get an application the day you're going to review them. This will be your racket. Or you don't want to get a situation where you put candidates down on your agenda. You post it within the 48-hour notice, and then you have an applicant come out of the woodwork after that period of time.
So I would amend my motion to reflect that each posting be closed one, each time we have to post it until we have a member or an applicant at least to consider for membership, that each posting be closed one week prior to our open space meeting.
Okay, let me jump in really quick. What we agreed on at our last meeting was that we were going to automatically repost should we not get any applications. And that's gonna happen. What I want to make sure that Mr. Gail's motion includes is that it is framed, that it's like gonna tail on to the decision we already made previously prior, that we will, this will be a perpetual thing. Is that what I understand?
Yes, we'll review it each month, you know, rather than making it perpetuity. You know, I noticed here under new business, repost committee vacancy through June 26th, 2024. And I would like to see that date included. And then we will revisit it if we need to, if no one applies, at our next meeting. The other thing that I'd like to see happen, and the Board of Selectmen does this, is that applicants must be present in some form at the meeting in which they are appointed.
Okay, so right now what we're talking about those, the application update from Mr. Morey, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. We're talking about the vacancy and that sort of thing. I just want to make sure that we say on topic really quick that what we're doing. And I don't disagree with anything we're saying. I think we should rubber stamp exactly what you're saying and just move it to.
I had forgotten that it was under new business.
Yeah, it's under new business.
So I'm gonna draw my motion quickly. We can be addressed it under new business. I apologize for taking everyone's time, just totally forgot.
Oh, no, you're.
And I think we know where the motion's gonna go under new business.
Agreed, agreed, yeah, I agree.
And that's it.
Yeah, just wanna make sure that we say that, yeah. So as far as Mr. Morey's, it's a case close situation unless otherwise we received a completed application from him, just as we would any other member of our community. Correct.
So you don't need to make any kind of decision about this. What about the application you already received?
Um, I notified Town Hall that we rejected it as a committee as after our previous meeting because that is what we decided. This is the only thing.
Okay.
I let Leanne know that.
Okay, so then no decisions to be made there?
No decisions to be made, it's more on just discussion. Now, yeah, so there we have that. The next order, the Facebook page update. This is old business because we did talk about approaching and voted on approaching Town Hall for a Facebook page. I have since been in touch with Town Hall about this and have done some research about the departments within the city, pardon me, within the town that do have Facebook pages and what they use them for. And so I'm on the verge of wanting to make a motion to rescind the request to make a Facebook page because here's why. We have to approach the Board of Selectmen for their approval and I have to not only approach them in person, but I have to give them a reasoning and content that we want in this Facebook page. I can't just blindly make it a permission. So when I did my research of what other committees do, and there are no other committees that have Facebook pages, there are other town, council-led, well, council-led aging is a city department with paid employees, they have a Facebook page. The Dayton Lions Club is its own entity, it's not a town thing. They have their own admin, right? So that's exclusive for them. Revive Dayton Parks is not, while it is tied to Kevin Smith, it has content relevant to an active, an active department, right? With staff. So I just wanted to revisit, although I love the enthusiasm, what I would like to encourage or see if we can talk about is the fact that we do have the availability to use the town's webpage. And Leanne has agreed to train myself, actually, and you're welcome to by law. It's could be your responsibility, actually. Unless you want to give it to me, which is fine. But by law, you're entitled to the right to moderate our page, basically, on the Town Hall site.
So is it like by law, the chair and the clerk have that privilege or something?
By law, it's the clerk has the first right to it, honestly. And then if you feel like you want to pass that responsibility, at this point, it's a Leanne does it because we don't have you doing it. You're not trained to do it. Leanne's more than welcome to train me to do it. She's welcome to get it off her plate. Somebody just has to be officially trained, as Mr. Gail had pointed out previously. And that could have been actually Mr. Holt or Mr. Higgins. I apologize for a number of celebrities leaders. So the point is, is that we've got a page that is available to us that we can use, that we don't have to jump through any hoops at this point. Maybe if we could put just a dog ear in the Facebook is when we do have things like, okay, if we have a partnership with the other committees, like the Jeffs, the Kevins, forgive me for the others, the ConCons, all of them. When we have active stuff and we can share their posts and their photographs and their activities, then we actually may have some content that's relevant, non, that's apolitical, right?
So here's where I would disagree.
Okay.
Let me tell you, let me explain why I would disagree. The Commission on Disability has the Facebook page. I'm the moderator of the FB page for COD. And COD, similar to us, is a committee of volunteers. There is no one receiving payment from the town to be a member of COD, including the chair. Chair could be anyone. It happens to be a member of the board stuck in right now, but it could be anyone. It was me before until I gave that up. And they are statutory only in the sense that their responsibility, similar to ours, is to be able to make recommendations to the town on certain types of things that they feel the town should consider as, you know, as it relates to people with disabilities. And that's their mandate. They do not, they're not an enforcement component of the town. They're a recommendation component of the town. And the bylaws stipulate all of that. What we do post on there, if anybody's seen it at any time, what I post only is when I see things that the community might want to know about, activities related to camps or just articles that somebody with a disability has accomplished or achieved something positive. Or if there's a program coming up or something with DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation, or Hy-Vee Trails. Or there's something new that we've done in town that we've launched or that we've built or that we've completed. Those are the kinds of things that I post. And I can see, while it wouldn't be much for open space to post, there would be some things, if we get information from other communities about what open space has done, for example, you know, we go down further the coast to effort. They've done some things with our open space committee that has been really interesting. We go to a couple of places on the Cape that have done some really good things. There, you know, where they've used open space to make areas more recreational friendly or put pathways through it or various things. I see it as an opportunity to at least have a different presence out there in that sense. And those are the kinds of things that we can post on it. So if you were to take this to the boss, you would be making the same argument that we did for COD, which is that the purpose of having the page is to be able to post positive things that are going on with us with regard to our community, get input on what's going on in our community, but also to share things that we find in the Commonwealth that other open space committees aren't doing throughout the Commonwealth so that we can educate residents through that process about what people do and don't do and how it's utilized in different places to keep the discussion going. Period, end of story. And when we want to get into posting our minutes there, no. When we want to get into posting our agendas there, you can. You can put a link to minutes and a link to agendas because others did that too. We did, we did that for COD, for example. We would post a link to our meeting, we would post a link to our agenda. If we had things we were putting up there in the faculty, we would post a link to it. We also would put a link in there to our Zoom link so people could join directly from FB. So I see it as having a positive as not a negative. And I don't think something like this is a big sell to the Board of Selectmen because I think the argument for it is the same as it was for COD. So that's, and that's, in terms of the administrative rights, the administrative rights can be given to any member, whoever the committee chooses. It could be given to the chair, it could be given to the clerk, it could be given to any one of us. I wouldn't want it just because I've got other things going. But it's not a place where you have to monitor it a lot. You know, you might check on it once a week even if there's nothing that you're posting, simply to see if there's any comment or anything at all. But then you can use the town's website to invite people to it and put a link to it. And then you could also put a link from it back to the town. So those are the things that we are about to deal with it. But I think it's just another way to give us a positive presence so that if we're having a meeting to have a discussion of something and we're really looking for public input, which we always want, it's another way to get the public involved in the process. That's just my thought, just wanted to share that.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gail. You're welcome.
One, you're saying that we have the opportunity available to us subject to approval by the Board of Selectmen, correct?
That's my understanding.
And I'm getting a sense that at the current time, that would be quite a task for any one member of this board unless someone feels that they have the time to do that. I would like to wait until we get the fifth member on board before we delve into that and decide to divvy up responsibilities and priorities to those responsibilities. Having a Facebook page is a very positive thing. But right now, where open space is in its infancy, I wonder how much we could really put into it, about its content.
That was kind of my question too, like how much would we be posting to it? What would we post, would it be worth it?
Unless we figure out what we're gonna post, then we gotta go up and get the stuff to post. I see that as down the road. And personally, right at this point, there are other issues that I think are important that we should be discussing. Generating the stuff that will make the page. So if we could maybe table the Facebook page, um, at another meeting.
Wait, well, we can do one of two things. We can table it or we can, because it followed through with town. We are tentatively, I'm on the agenda to their, I believe it's the June 12th meeting, to appear in person. So that's what I wanted to come before the committee tonight and before the public. Then the selectmen, you go before the selectmen.
For what?
For a Facebook page request. Now, and so instead of tabling it, what we can do is we can put the request in with the caveat that we get the approval, it's just not going to be utilized just yet. We have the approval in our pocket is all we need. That will suffice Mr. Gail. I am leaning towards my, I don't want to be repetitive, so I'm not gonna repeat myself, but that's, but those are my, those are, or I feel we have two options right now. We could table it or we could go for approval and then just table the use of it. So.
Can we, in the meantime, also go through the training so that, you said we can post on the town's Facebook page, is that correct? If we've gone through the training?
Sorry, not town Facebook page, the actual dyton-hema.gov page. We have a.
On the town website.
On the town's website.
Not on Facebook.
Not on Facebook. So like the Open Space Committee link within would open up there where it lists our names and our terms.
Okay, well, we should, yeah, so we should do that for sure.
You have the right to monitor and put whatever, I mean, you know, the release, the tam on there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, you have that first right in that, honestly.
I mean, can, does it have to be one specific person? Could people go through the training and be their representative?
Our name, yes.
Well, the only, the only reason they will generally ask that it be one or at the most two people for training purposes is because they have to give that person administrative rights, first of all. And whoever they give administrative rights to is responsible for making everything post correctly, but also making sure that it's ADA compliant, et cetera, et cetera. So because you have to be given rights, there is, and because it's a town official website, even though it's our page, there is a reasoning behind why the person has to have.
So sticking to the discussion at hand, the Facebook page, is there?
I think it does make sense, at least to go forward with your request. And you could, with the caveat, as, and I can make an emotional, if you like, or somebody can, I don't disagree with what the other two members are thinking either, that we asked, but I'm gonna suggest that we ask for the right to do it. But we emphasize that for now, we're only asking for the right, but that it's still in aviance until we feel we're ready to actually have it put together, have it, till we design it, put it together, et cetera. And that could even be several months down the road until we feel that there's content to put up there that's relevant to what we're doing.
Specifically, can I, can I just rephrase that? Specific content relevant to what we're doing? Because we already have kind of gone through a bloodbath point of the things that are relevant, right, to the community, not to maybe us as the committee, right? That we, that we could showcase on that side.
Yes.
Okay, cool, cool, cool. I think it works.
So that would, that to me at least gets it out on the table.
And then gives me some talking points for the boss.
And they can, you know, at least, look, they can either say yea or nay, or you can say, you know, if you'd rather have us come back when we're ready to launch it, that's fine, but we, in the meantime, by saying yes, we know we can at least plan for it and we can determine, you know, the content that's gonna be up there, it's not gonna be offensive, it's not gonna be this, it's not gonna be that, it's gonna be this, this, this that you already, we've already discussed.
Yes, sir.
You know, and it's not gonna happen tomorrow.
Right, okay.
So I think that's okay with the other two members.
I don't have any shoot up, especially if you're.
Now, could you review what were, because that happened prior to becoming on board, were the purposes of the page specifically that you want?
So that's exactly why we're talking about this tonight is because we didn't dive into details. We just, we, we knew that we had the option, we knew that other departments, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gail, had had access and we were willing to put in the time as a committee to showcase our committee. And.
That's correct.
And it was as innocent and as basic as that at that time of coming on.
That's correct. And I haven't seen, and Mr. Holt can, I can happily correct me. I haven't seen the town at any point yet say no to a page.
I understand, but I'm a little uncomfortable. And I'd like to hear is you're going to the next Board of Selectmen meeting? Is that correct?
Leanne just had me on, yeah.
Okay.
No, I can always pull that off, I can retract that.
No, 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 I understand that. And I'm not sure if that's a wise thing to do. What I'd like to hear today, before you do go on the air, is what are the specific purposes that you're going to do, use of? Because I'm sure one of the members of the Board of Selectmen are gonna ask you, what do you need the page for? What are you going to put on the page? Because they need to have some idea before they're going to approve as to what the page will be used for.
So what I have listed currently to propose is an opportunity to have a presence within our community for the purpose of having the ability to post positive things as it pertains to Dayton and as well as what other municipalities do with their open space. We can post our minutes, our agendas, our links to Zoom so that people can join. And then we also can invite people to and from the town's website.
Would you have the ability, would you allow the ability for discussion on issues? A forum, would there be a forum as part of it?
I believe Facebook naturally has a commenting section unless we were to choose to have that shut off.
Right, the chat room. Correct.
I don't know that where is. I can see it happening where we might need to do a case by case, but I wouldn't want to go in full collection of comments because there, that would discourage public input. It might be. As heated as it could or could not get, it may be input, so that, but so that I. Would, could we ask, what does the Council on Aging do in that regard? Disability, I'm sorry, forgive me, the Council on Disability says that you don't commenting open?
Yeah, the Commission. Yeah, the Commission on Disability, we do have it open to comments.
Okay.
Every now and then we get a comment which is, you know, thank you very much for posting, I didn't realize this, this is great, et cetera, et cetera. I've also had a few comments where people will say, you know, the town could do, has other things they could do with their money. You know, why are they spending time on a ramp and they could be such and such? Or what's this stupid this or that? And my response is, when I do it, is very general, with just to say, you know, you know, if you have a concern about such and such, then come to our next meeting. And I'm Republican, but we'd be happy to hear from you. Period. It's not a place where I'm gonna get into discourse at all and get into a he said, she said. Because somebody's gonna take that and they're gonna send it to somebody else and then you're done. May as well, may as well go to bed. So I would use, I just use it as a way to say, if you have something to say, we'd love to hear it, come to our meeting. Feel free, generally, I've never found anybody who's come to the meeting yet. There hasn't been many negative comments except the kind that I just mentioned. You know, people will make other, and then they'll say something else like, do you know where I can get a wheelchair or do you know where I can this and that? And usually when I'll tell that person that, and they may ask you a specific question like something, do you know where I can get more information on the laws pertaining to? You could, if they say, well, you could go to Mass General Law, such and such, which talks about open space. Or you can say, if you really feel it's something you want to discuss privately, you know, this is, you know, send me, message me through Facebook and I'll be happy to give you specific information about that question, which is not your commentary, but we're gonna find something.
Okay. I think that's reasonable.
And that's it.
I think we would want to keep comments open. We wouldn't like, we wouldn't want to shut out a source of public comment. But then we would just, like, I don't know if the town had, as part of having a page, if they have a requirement that someone needs to be moderating that conversation and actively responding to comments. And what if someone were to post something like inappropriate that we would want to remove from the page? Like, does that kind of thing ever come up? Like, would there be a responsibility like on a, like that on us if we were to have a page? Because we would want to make sure someone has the time to be doing it.
I think the trainings that you would have would answer a lot of those questions.
The only time I've ever removed anybody from the FB comment at all is if, I've always, my, my, my theory has always been let them say what they want. It doesn't have to have a response. Usually it doesn't need a response. It speaks, their comment will speak for itself by whoever's actually looking at the page. But if somebody swears, and I had somebody one time calling big ADA coordinator's position, you know, the F-bomb, things like that. Yes, I deleted that because it wasn't appropriate for the page. I didn't respond to the person and say, you know, redo this because you used the F-bomb. I chose as the administrator to delete it. Because that's not the kind of, again, that's not the discourse we're looking for. And if the person felt that they needed to swear about it, then that has to be their issue, not ours. That was my feeling and I would stick to that feeling. So, you know, we do have the ability to control that if people are really hostile. And I mean by calling members' names or saying other things about them and so forth. We also technically, just like you would on the town page, have the ability to block them. So those, those controls do exist for whoever the administrative person is.
I think the answer would be in the training.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, so maybe this doesn't impact your decision to go to the select board, but when we decide, if we do decide to put up a page, we're gonna have to make sure there's someone who's moderating that page. And it might be a bit of a time commitment.
I will just add before Lenny says what he's gonna say, then my total amount of time to have to monitor the page, at least the COD page on a weekly basis, is literally five to 10 minutes.
Okay. All right.
What I'd like to do is make a motion to go forward with Robert Gere, making a presentation before the Board of Selectmen at the, is it June 14?
12.
The next Selectmen's meeting?
I'm afraid so, 12th, December 12th.
June 12.
Yeah, 16.
Making a formal request that the Open Space Committee be approved for a Facebook page.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only discussion comment I will make under discussion is that would be great if at least one of us could be there to support that request.
Absolutely.
And I will do my best.
That kind of goes without saying.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Which passes unanimously. Onto our next old business. And I'm definitely open to tabling this because we do have something that falls under new business that could actually be better to talk about at this point in time. But we do have the Open Space Recreation Plan 2021, 2028 action items. And I do want to just note that we do have a general discussion ahead of us in new business about the priorities of our committee, which I think could supersede where we then open up those action items and enter them. So that's where I'm at with that.
Yeah, I did, discussion. As I read through the Open Space Recreation Plan, there isn't a whole lot specifics about Dayton.
Selectmen.
Is there a goal, a plan for specifically Dayton?
I don't think you have the right dash in this.
So what you've got in your hands is the Massachusetts outline.
But I don't have the.
What I can send you, I thought I sent you this PDF. I just wanted you to check your spam folder.
Okay.
This PDF right here, I sent you the night that you actually interviewed with us.
Okay.
So let me go ahead, I'll send it from Blue Mail, because we know you're getting an email from Blue Mail.
Yes.
So let me go ahead and send that to you. But we do have one that is very specific to Dayton. It is.
Like 100 something pages, I think.
Yeah, and it's in 12 different sections. And section nine are our action items, so.
I think I sent it to you already, so it's there somewhere.
You sent it?
Yes. Yes, yeah, even before you even put an application in my local form, one through, back in like February or something.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Um so I'd like to make a motion to table the Open Space Recreation Plan 2021, 2022, action item, discussion and action.
Hold your word.
Yes.
The team, the chairman doesn't make the motion, he recommends that one of us make.
Okay.
Okay.
But before you make the motion, can I?
Yeah.
With the discussion?
Yeah.
Um, so the the purpose of going through the plan was to inform our priorities, that was kind of like, and like, I know we started this and at this point, what we've already reviewed, half of the members on this committee, I don't know if even were there for that initial review that we did.
Right.
Um, we might wanna, I don't know if we wanna start over, but the the purpose of that um item was to go through the plan to determine like how we as a committee because as as the Open Space Committee, kind of like our primary task is implementing this open space plan. So the, our purpose in going through the plan was to identify what we could do as a committee to address the the actions outlined in the plan. And so I think that should be informing the new business about our priorities. So they're they're kind of like one in the space.
You can see, okay.
Where we're reviewing the plan to identify what our priorities are. And it might be that other priorities arise that aren't in this plan specifically, but that was kind of how we we came about it when we reconvened the committee, um you know, like seeing as that being on purpose to implement this plan.
And I and I agree with you, I think back in December, January.
Yeah.
That was the period when we had Kevin Smith Jr. Um, and I don't remember if there was anyone else right now coming and sit with us to go over the plan and to begin looking at what components the plan fell in our purview and how we could interact with other committees regarding those particular components. At that time, you and I were the only two people who were here. So the chair and Lenny were not part of the process at that point, and I I agree with you. It was to begin to identify where we're where we fit. So I do think it makes sense to, we don't have to you know, I think we can all discuss the plan more and review it more, and maybe we do need to start at the beginning again and go back and look. And we're, and so that we're in agreement now that we have a mostly full seat of table here of people, where where we all feel collectively we fit, because that's also gonna determine where we feel we wanna liaison with other committees.
So I had, so it's section nine, the action plan, which starts on page 50 of the plan, that was what we had started going through. Um and I did take notes on like the items that we went through, I think we got through items one through 10, it looks like, um there are
Thirty-nine?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Um, is there another page?
Thirty-four, yeah.
Yeah, thirty-four items on here. So I mean, I could share like what we discussed, like what we kind of landed on for one through 10 from last time, or we can just start from scratch and discuss.
I think if you could share, let's, it gets us. So this gets this little insider information.
Um, okay, so if you and for anyone online or here, if you wanna follow along on the plan, on page 51 in the plan, um, which you can find online if you search for the Town of Dayton Open Space and Recreation Plan, it was completed in 2021. Um so action one is to prepare a master plan for Broad Cove, uh which we had discussed that being something um that the Trails Committee was actively working on and something that was in their purview and so perhaps not in ours. Um, for number two, develop a town trail slash canoe slash open space guide. That was another action that we felt like the Trails Committee was already actively working on that and that. And not to say that we don't have a role, we could support them, um maybe this could be something that we talk about in like when we, I know one of the things we wanted to talk about was like connecting and coordinating with other committees. So it could be that we talk to the Trails Committee and see where they're at with these actions and see how we can support, but that would likely be them leading, not us. Um so action number three, to approve opportunities for development of shared use paths. Um, we had said that that would be um like the Trails Committee and the ADA Coordinator, because that's specifically about trails, um. So like again, not really our realm of something we would lead. Number four, um improve town landing off of Pleasant Street. Uh we were unsure if maybe that was already in progress, um and also it's a park and rec um would probably be leading that, so again, maybe something we could support and and yes, it's already in progress?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know if there's a role for us there, but.
They are currently in negotiations for an acquisition of a passover land that is adjacent.
Okay.
Take it to the next.
Cool. All right, and then so number five, um is conduct a review and comprehensive update of the zoning bylaw. Um, that's something that's already kind of in progress or or parts of it, um but also so in previous meetings, we've talked about um the the conservation subdivision zoning, that's something that's already in progress that we are advising on, but that's not something that we're leading on, so I would say for that action, that's not necessarily something we would lead, but we would provide recommendations as it's happening. Um, I don't know if a larger review of the zoning bylaw is happening or if it's just that specific.
There's not, there is not a larger review right this minute taking place.
Yeah. Yeah.
There may be, we briefly talked about zoning in fact. Um that it may be necessary at some point with these evolving in town.
Yeah.
But
Yeah, so.
So not yet.
Mm-hmm. And I know like reviewing that and advising on that was a priority of this committee and might continue to be, but um or to be determined when we decide what our priorities are. Um but we would, that would be more kind of like a support advisory role. Um so then number six is incorporate open space residential design as an update to any previous conservation subdivision provision. So so that's kind of, that's what we were just talking about, um that conservation subdivision zoning updates. Um, yeah, so that that component is in progress, but the larger zoning bylaw updates maybe are not. But I would say the same thing applies.
Yeah, and I think we've talked about that for
Yeah.
as part of our overall process of wanting to identify future space in town and its use
Yeah.
as well, which we had is, you know, one of the things there, but how that you, how that's gonna be done, how that's gonna fit into what space would be used for industrial versus open versus housing, what type of development, things like that as well.
Yeah.
So would we lean more on planning on that one? Would that be the lead and we'd be a support advisor role again on number six?
Yeah, the planning board, yeah, I would say for five and six would be planning board lead and we would advise. Um and maybe we would wanna like be aware and advise and make sure like we're involved, which is something that we can talk about in our like communications with other committees. Um okay, so number seven, conduct a comprehensive bylaw review focused on reduced vulnerability and improved resiliency. So again, we would had said that would be a planning board task, so I think that falls under the same categories five or six, where we would wanna advise, but we would not be the lead. Um for number eight, that's already been completed, develop a regional projects addendum to the municipal vulnerability preparedness slash hazard mitigation plan. Um, so that action was already completed. I understand.
And that plan um was served or involved? Oh, so there was involved in it as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Um, so number nine, incorporate provisions for shared use paths in the development process whenever and wherever environmentally and economically feasible. Um so that one, because it's related to development, we had said maybe that's a planning board task. But something perhaps, and maybe with the Trails Committee, we could I could see us advising on how the planning board might go about doing that, but at the end of the day, that's the group, yeah.
I agree.
Um, okay, and then number 10 was work with neighboring communities to complete the development of the Dayton links to the Taunton River Trail and connections to the South Coast Bike Way. Um that is pro- in progress and something that the Trails Committee is working on. And that was as far as we got so far.
So do we wanna go through some more of these? Um, or do we want to?
Yeah, yeah, we wanna just continue.
Absolutely.
Okay. So number 11 is to develop and map additional bicycle and um shared, what is it, CPC, shared use between
Shared use pathways.
Shared use pathways, thank you. Develop and map additional bicycle and shared use pathway facilities throughout the Town of Dayton. And there are some examples like Brook Street, Hart Street, Lewis Street, Spring Street.
I think that's partly um trails.
Yeah.
It's partly in parks and rec. And with us as advisory.
Yeah.
And there is currently, you know, plenty of work going on with that.
That is in progress.
There is progress, there is some progress, there's some grants that are out there as well uh for different aspects of some of these projects. For example, for um trails, CPC, you'll see this um when we do the warrant, um there's a a grant request from them that we're we're, we put out there in the warrant as an article so that we can find us, or an engineering study that they wanna do for the wetlands area, for putting trails through the wetlands areas. And we may wanna weigh in on that at some point, but we can't weigh in yet until we, until if and if this is approved at town meeting. And then when the preliminary engineering study is done and we get more of a better idea of the scope based on what we're told can and can't be done through going through the wetlands, this is out behind Alpes, Restaurant, but going back that way to the wetlands. Uh to make boardwalk, boardwalk trails. So that's when we're gonna, we're gonna wanna lay in, weigh in on that, on how we're gonna what we, how we think it should be perceived and how it should be used or utilized as well. But there's no specific design yet, there's an idea of how many hundreds of feet it, one boardwalk would go, how many hundreds of feet another one would go, but it all still has to be engineered out.
And would this will be for bicycle and shared use, or is this number 12, is this develop trail, trail connections through town?
Yes, this would be only as part of the trail connections.
Okay, sorry.
This would not, I mean theoretically, you could take your bike on these boardwalks, I suppose, but then you're gonna go into mud and dirt when it goes off and then it connects, you know, things like that. So it may not be, we may ultimately, as a town, decide it's not for bicycle use, right?
Yeah, that's Broad Cove, right? Is that what you were referring to, the broader?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, so that um there was a separate action specific about Broad Cove.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
And the law, the district plan for Broad Cove, yeah.
Very specific. But that's just an example of something that is looking at for development.
Yeah.
Um, so might that be a trails thing then?
Well, for now, it is, it is through trails, and trails is leading the charge, if you will, or discussion, whatever way you wanna put it.
Right.
But you know, with projects like this, we're not even looking at consideration of project completion for another four or five years, six years.
Right. And there's the legal stuff.
So there's also legal aspects, components. There may be, who knows what what's gonna be, you know, you have wetlands, it's gonna be stayed into it for some other mitigation perhaps. Um, this is a project that ultimately could cost, you know, millions of dollars to do.
Sure.
Uh sorry, it's estimated right now to complete a project like this will be somewhere between two to three million dollars. But we're gonna wanna weigh in on that at some point. So.
So this might be one of the things that you would consider a priority we discuss later, correct? Should I put a circle around it, Mr. Gail?
I would, yeah, I would, I would, I would, because the priority is that there's, they're gonna be all looking to if this gets approved at town meeting, they're gonna be looking to preliminarily bring an engineering firm in to start the study process, so when they come in and they start to do their study and they're looking for public feedback, that could be within the next six months, we wanna be able to weigh in on that and be part of that process.
You know, in regards to assisting other committees, public input and our input is nice, but I'm wondering if there is something members of this committee could do more in regards to grant writing or correspondence with some of the major partners that are involved in this. One of the problems that appears exists in Dayton is manpower. And I'm just wondering if groups like Trails would be willing to take us on board to help them with some of the either be the research, or grant writing, or application work.
I could never, I I could never see them saying no.
That, and I believe that shit the Community Preservation Committee would also be willing to if not, I wouldn't say do the work for us, but show us how to start looking for that grant money and how to write and ask for it.
That'd be like
So you like Kevin would understand how to get that going and would be receptive to our committee and help us, I'm sure.
Yeah, they write grants for those things, I've done a lot of grant work in town. Um, you know, there are some of us who at least are moderately well versed at writing grants, we don't get everyone we ask for, but
I have grant writing experience.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to help the town.
Yeah.
And all those people on Trails, they're all volunteers. And to sit down and write a grant for the type of money they're going to need is
I think there were a few of us at this table, at least two of us, who have a background in that. And I would, I would, you know, could I put 20 hours a week into it? No. But if I needed to put an hour or two here, there advising, helping, doing research, if some of one of these committees asked me to weigh in 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 different capacities than I said asked, whether it's related to open space or ADA or whatever, or I would be happy to do it. So.
Thank you.
Should we keep going?
So that was kind of, so I think we were still on 11, but 12 is very related. Um, develop trail connections throughout town in order to improve public safety and accessibility to town assets and facilities. Um so 11 was more on like mapping and developing the trails, and this is to develop trail connections specifically to help improve access to town app, to town facilities. So that could be like, I don't know, maybe sidewalks, that's the way I'm interpreting it anyway. Um, like having off-road trails as well as maybe like better sidewalks to help improve pedestrian safety in town.
Yeah. Yeah, parking.
Yeah.
All those things, yes. And that brings in, you know, several different committees for all that.
Yeah. Um, but I would say, well, do we know if the Trails Committee works on, do they only work on trails in open spaces, like parks, or would they also do something like that, like sidewalks through town? They are working on like townwide trails, right?
Yes, they are.
Yes, yeah, they, their work has gotten pretty specific
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
because of that extensive trail, you know, from top to far where our line is. Because of that extensive trail, you know, from Tottenham to where our line is.
Yeah, that's it.
A lot of work, some of it has been easy and.
But they're all, but let me, they're also working on existing trails and trying to clean them up and post them.
Right. But not any additional new ones.
I think that they have things they'd like to identify, and that's where we can work with them.
Okay.
Because they have spaces in town where they may think there could be, oh, trails that can open up depending upon the land that's there. Or places where trails potentially could be, or where there could be links from trail A to trail B. I think it would be worth, when we're getting to that point, to have Jeff come and talk to us about that.
Jeff has a significant proposal over the salt lash.
Right, that's what we were just talking about.
Yeah.
That's gonna take up a great deal of their time.
But I think it's still worth at some point probably, we'll get to that level to hear from them.
Well, I, I mean, I think it would just be friendly to invite.
Yeah.
Jeff and Kevin to our meeting, monthly meetings, that's just a courtesy, honestly.
Both have said to me that they would love that.
Okay.
Yeah. So then back at where we're at thirteen, then thirteen then?
So well, for, so for twelve, we'll say that that's Trails Committee, but that we would support them.
And then that's what you want.
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe go on to thirteen. Develop a method of prioritization for land acquisition, including our natural green infrastructure slash lands that provide critical natural services such as flood control, water supply protection. Groundwater recharge, cooling, um habitat buffers and habitat linkage.
That is definitely us.
That's, that's, so that's open space, right? And um I know that there are members of our town who are um. Coherent in how to establish, uh coherent, is that, that they understand the framework it takes to put together a trust. So that the town could invest in itself through private funds, through private donation.
Right. Yes.
Like a Dyton Land Trust?
Like a Dyton Land Trust, exactly, um.
That would be great. I do think that's. Is there an interest to do that in town?
Yes, there is.
There is an interest, yeah, I just don't know if this person is publicly one, is like oisted out there or if it was just a conversation I had at Cal Tech last weekend.
But I think. And, and, and I, I, I think there are, there are a few of us that could help put that together.
Yeah.
And have the expertise to do it.
And we also had some discussion through public input at C P C meeting. And they are favorable to efforts of that part, obviously to get their funding, you have to put together a proposal that's sound. But they are very open to that idea. There's a lot of support for that.
Okay.
It's just.
And other towns are doing that through open space as well, and I think we could get some information from some of the other towns and how they're doing it.
In switch, even has an administrative, no, I'm sorry, an open space, part-time position administrator role. They're so active, they've been active since nineteen seventy-nine, I dare us, I apologize.
That's okay.
I would say this, if you're going to go down that road, you will need for being for legal assistance as well. Just in establishing the trust.
Oh, yeah, that's interesting.
Or, or some discussion with the town administrator and the board of selectmen as to what. They will fund for legal, because it would come through them.
Something for next year's work.
Okay, so, so, so this is something that we will look into further.
Right.
Yes.
So we like number thirteen?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna put a circle on that. And actually, if you know, these pink slips came from when you interviewed, I went home, my children may, a lot of things have maybe been relevant to your interview, that's, that you're running out of targets, or.
I'm just talking to people and how I feel, if there's, there's a need to plan.
Yeah, I'm pretty consistent there.
Okay, so fourteen, retain productive agricultural soils and promote the practice of agriculture.
So I think we need to get in touch with the agricultural commission and introduce ourselves, and maybe invite that person along with Kevin and Jeff.
We do accept that, I don't know that the agricultural commission is very active. I would say they're less active than active.
Really?
Far less.
They are less active, but there are still people in that group who are very interested.
Yeah. Yeah.
I will say this, there is an individual who is on the D D I C. We really should invite her in, she has her own file. She is a member of the board trustees at the Bristolaki. She has many contacts and many wonderful ideas that are very interested. She also may be able to put us on the right path in regards to why we have a cultural line.
Well, you could always ask that person to fill out an application.
I'm sorry?
You could always ask that person to fill out an application.
Well, she's very busy, but I would reach out to.
Just for, I mean, so just so that we're on, we, for point of clarification, we were talking about land acquisition, and now we're talking about just. Retaining productive agricultural soil to promote the practice, would that also be then land trust? Am I understanding that true, the same? Um or would that just be promoting the practice of agriculture to other residents within the community?
I have the opportunity to attend House Ways and Means Committee, and the Secretary of Agriculture spoke because they were presenting the budget. And one of the things that has happened across the community is that agriculture is partnering with other groups. And whatever that they're partnering is in the area of solar farms. So you have the agro, almost, I mean, we have a great project in Dyton, Mr. Capravolo, who is doing that. Now, that's a private project. But what some of the communities are doing is that their municipalities are getting into the solar business. So you can create a multiple use for it, so you just don't have land under the solar going, no use. Some of them, you create a solar project and then have a community garden, if you will. Like, I mean, we have a small version of that, or like, some communities will do is they will rent it out. They own it, but they'll rent out the land under the solar panels, so they're generating income, and that's important for the town. They're generating income through the solar energy, but then if they rent the land underneath it to farmers. They're getting the crops, but they're paying a rental, so that's additional revenue for the town, it could be a double.
Whammy.
And it, it, more and more communities, smaller communities in the western part of the state are, are starting to look into that. As a, as a way to generate revenue.
I think the question is whether it comes under a purview, and. I think it does, I just don't know where. I feel that it does, but I don't honestly, I feel like I know where yet.
I'm gonna take the top one first, right?
I was just gonna say, in our um mission statement, we have agriculture specifically, I think.
Yeah.
Well, it says to preserve rural character, protect water resources and wildlife habitat and provide, so it says rural character, it doesn't say agriculture specifically, I thought it. But um it has come up as a priority in previous meetings. So it could be something that we, maybe we, we start it to return to it later and figure out like what our role would be.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it's apparently.
Because it seems like.
Uh this is in the list of priorities?
Yeah, like it seems, it seems like maybe this would be something that an ag commission would do, but if there's not. If Dyton's ag commission isn't currently actively working on this, maybe we could help like spur some.
And you know, it's possible that us wanting to work on it with ag, piggybacking on what you're saying a little bit, could, could.
Absolutely. Energy.
Be an impetus to energize them.
Yeah.
As a right to, as we are a right to form community.
Mm-hmm.
So.
At the joint meeting of planning conservation, they were hoping to have a meeting. Another meeting that would include us and Park and Rec, and one of the areas that they were really hoping that conservation. And Rec would be on board with, and talking to Kevin, he definitely has said he is, is passive recreation land. And that would help to maintain the rural community. That is going to take funding, that'll probably be in the grants, but what Jeff was suggesting, and he's spot on. Is that it'd be a group effort coming out of from several groups, open space, Park and Rec, conservation, you know, pooling resources and money.
Um so.
Should we keep going?
Well, I do wanna, I don't wanna lose traction, I think that we had brought up that we know of maybe somebody in the community who was part of AgCom that is, maybe if it's not as. Active, that maybe that person could act as a, a point person in our agenda, okay.
Yeah.
So um so that maybe we can get some, an opinion.
Absolutely.
Public input.
Why are we gonna put it on the agenda?
Why would we put it on the agenda?
Do we um. Just gonna see if we, I know we talked about, talking about how to coordinate with like other committees and other, like that was something that, but that's not something that we have for this agenda.
Um this is for the agenda. Well, it's sort of. What we talked about, I think, was um. A joint meeting with C P C, Con- Conservation Commission, Paul Reynolds, Jeff Carvalho and Kevin Smith were the names that I was able to remember and write down. Would that be a special meeting that we, a joint meeting that we would do with them? Is that what we're looking? Okay, so we would wanna put and.
Well, we can invite them to one of our meetings if they've brought other members. Then there's a question of whether each committee separately has to, depending upon how many members they have and how many show up.
If they have a court.
If they have a warrant, and it has to be an official meeting.
Well, joint meeting.
Yeah, well, that's an official meeting, and, and a joint, a joint official meeting, let me put it that way.
I mean, it wouldn't be an official meeting because. We would be having a meeting.
Right, but if we have their chairs or their liaison meet with us.
Just an inv, a single invite and not one.
Right, that the single person that's coming.
Yeah.
Or one of us, like we talked about having a subcommittee who would coordinate with other committees. Like that could be one or two of us that maybe attend their meetings, talk to them, get their input and report back to the group, it could be either way.
Exactly.
Um but I guess, and, and maybe to your, are, are you saying that um. That attached the, the ag, agricultural?
Yeah, I just didn't really lose track of maybe, yeah.
Maybe we should write down.
I'll be jumped, I do.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm gonna get her phone numbers to her conference.
So I guess maybe we'll, we'll put AgCom and then we'll be there for some, I mean, I guess we'll kinda need to see what our role is at that point, right? Like a TBD status on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Based on maybe the, the input we get from them? Looks for me.
Okay. Do we wanna keep going through these recommendations we're on?
What number we on?
One fifteen.
Fifteen of thirty-four, and it's six forty, yeah.
And we've got, it's six forty. Um maybe we should go through the rest of the agenda and continue, put this on the agenda to continue next time.
I'm likely to, I do have a riverbed, it's in the riverine.
Because I think this is important to do.
Yeah, definitely.
It's just a worry about time.
Alright, um.
Does anybody have something to add? I don't know.
Do we uh.
I don't speak for everyone.
Do we need a motion to um put this on the next agenda for the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table this discussion to the next meeting.
Wait a second.
A second.
I would just ask that we change the table to continue.
Oh, continue, okay, thank you.
So, do you have a second on that?
I have a second.
Uh is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will table our action items in the next meeting.
This is really important, I'm glad we're starting to.
Absolutely.
Because this is really the heart of who we are.
Right.
And what we're gonna be involved in, so I think this is awesome that we're doing this, started this today.
On to some new business, uh we have already discussed through other old business, but we know that we need to repost our committee vacancy. Uh through June twenty-sixth, just for record, June twenty-sixth would be seven calendar days prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting of July third, twenty twenty-four. So that's how I pick that date, if everybody's ever read, is there any, any discussion, any reaction on that?
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to repost the committee vacancy uh through the period June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, and it looks like. Next up, we have general discussion about the priorities of our committee. And I think this dovetails on to some of the action items. Um just for the record, I have circled action item number five, action item number eleven, thirteen and fourteen, correct me if I'm wrong. As priorities, uh priorities that we've um highlighted.
The question becomes, shot two, one two, because if it's shot two, then we should. We need to a small number.
I mean, how do we feel about just identify, like, once we get, maybe we could even table this actual discussion? Because then we can, I guess my idea is that we just, certainly we know what our priorities are, and then, and then ultimately then maybe timelines.
I, and I agree with that.
Yeah. And then prioritize what we've come up with.
Right.
But I, I agree, I think when we finish the whole, the list of thirty-four. Then we can go back and look at what are the shorter terms, what are the longer term, because that's gonna advise to some extent. If we have a subcommittee to work with other committees or which direction we're gonna go and we're going, yeah.
With forty-four percent right there, so. Okay. I mean, so uh is there any, is there a motion possibly to table this discussion? Or uh actually, let me, yeah, let me um.
Continue.
To continue, yeah.
So.
Your second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor of this? And the next new business, adding public input during discussions of motions. Any further discussion?
So I, I, and I will, I had asked the chair to add this to the agenda. Um and the only reason is, I know we have public input at the end. And my concern is that. Our trend has been in town in many of the things that we're involved in, given committees, is to have public input at the end. And when you do that, you've already discussed the motions, you've already voted on the motions, but you haven't heard from the public. And the motion's already done, it's a done deal.
Yeah.
My concern there is the public doesn't really have a voice at that point. And I would like to see a way for us to give the public, at least with, with our committee, a little bit more of a voice. Now, that may mean when we discuss something to bring it up for a motion, we have two ways that I can see this going. One is to offer public input also um at the beginning, after we go through our pledge and our announcements and so forth, to see if the public has a comment. Because the public will have already, at least hopefully, seen the agenda online or be here in person.
Appropriately.
And will want to be able to say, look, I know you have agenda item coming up, number seven, and you're not there yet, but I wanna tell you my thoughts. You know, that's one way of doing it. The second way of doing it would be, as we're starting to do here, is when we have an agenda item, somebody brings the agenda item up. We briefly discuss it, there is a motion, then the motion is seconded, that is all. That is also the other possible time to invite anybody to give their public input. Because when I'm, for example, when I sit on another committee, that's part of what we do, and I like that process too, because we're saying, okay, now, we're in the motion, this is the motion we've made to do X, A, B, C, D, E. Does the public wanna weigh in now, after the motion has been seconded? And usually it's the members of the committee who will go first. So we're discussing it. And then after we've discussed it, the chair would say, are there any members of the public who wanna, who wanna speak on this motion? And then those members can weigh in. That may or may not influence our vote. It may or may not influence whether, based on what we hear from the public, maybe something we haven't thought about. So one of us may say, you know what, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. And then we continue the process, same, same way. But I think it's important, and I know I'm kind of pontificating here, I'm sorry.
Mister Holst has his hand up for the record.
I just.
I, I think one of those two ways, it's important for what we're doing, at least to let the public know we wanna hear from the public. And we're valuing the public, and especially when we're talking about meetings going for an hour and a half, maybe, and sometimes longer to really get into things. And if I remember the public, I wouldn't wanna be waiting an hour and a half or two hours to speak. Just my thoughts.
Strong. Mister Chairman, and this is across town policy, as well as Robert's rules of order. Um, I, I agree with what Mister Gail is saying. However, the chairman of every committee in this town, the right to set public input when, where, and how do the rules for public input rest in the hands of the chairman. And would that be, I'd like to hear what you have to say. And I will support that since the policy of the town is, is the chairman's call.
Did you wanna lead it up before I say my case?
Thank you. Um, I, I, I think I agree with Mister Gail. I think it, it's true, it's not fair that we're already making the decisions and then taking input after the decisions are already being made. Um, I, my, my concern is how it would, it could bog down decisions being made if there were, I mean, again, not that this has happened, but there could be an instance where um, we get a lot of public participation and, and like, I just worry about how it might get out of hand. But you're saying that that has been done in other committees and it's worked well, yes.
And what, what happens there in that sense is that usually the, the chair will recognize, let's, eventually the public are gonna speak.
Actually, if you don't mind, I, if I can um, address Mister Holst's inquiry.
I'm sorry.
No, because I think this will actually answer what you're about to say.
Go ahead.
Um, so that, I did do my research on what public input could or could not be limited to. And I think it would just be appropriate for the following bullet points, and that would be that the public addresses the chair. Uh, we establish a time limit to speak unless otherwise voted on to extend at that moment on a case by case basis. Speakers cannot yield their time to another person. Booing, hissing and clapping can be restricted. Establishing how many times a public can address the chair. So if there's multiple times, if there's a lot of time, we can, they can, we can restrict that or say multiple. Um, conversations are to be avoided. The chair may provide fact-based responses, but conversation is not allowed. Uh, the committee will remain quiet during the speaker's input. And the chair and the clerk shall note any questions asked so that they can be addressed later. So that's kind of the outline of a public input I've got on the table.
There is a need to limit um, public input. One of the problems that we've had in various committees over the last three years that I served on the board was the filibuster.
And it's important to remain, also note that we have the right, that the speaker cannot be repetitive. They cannot repeat their remarks. So I've had a non-repetitive remark, so it has to be.
And I think what I hear you saying there is the chair has, the chair can say, look, we're gonna give each person two minutes. Or whatever it is.
Two minutes, two minutes. So we've been just whatever, yeah.
So whatever it is, you can.
Absolutely.
And you know, depending upon the issue, it may be an issue where you feel people need a little more time. So you're gonna give them three, you and the clerk can look, whatever, you can give two or three. You know, um, I think that's important, and I agree with you, and I'm glad that you looked at that.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, because.
That's a big help.
Yeah, I think that probably.
Absolutely. So, um, so that would be then the, so then are there, is there any other discussion on the floor?
So I would make a motion that we, as a committee, defer to the chair for administering public input at the point of any motions being made and then seconded by members of the open space committee.
Mister Chairman, uh, Mister Gail.
Mister.
One of the concerns, and I'd like to just see an additional piece added, is that what's being developed tonight is sound. And it's something that we should incorporate as policy. So that down the road, Mister Gail chooses not to be chairman, and again, that the next chairman doesn't come in and change what you put together is spot on. So I would just ask if you would amend your motion to put as presented this evening, Mister Gail's report. Or Mister Gail's recommendations as presented.
I will amend the, the motion to add that if approved, my motion be considered as policy by the open space committee going forward in perpetuity until such time as a motion is made.
As presented tonight?
As presented tonight.
Okay.
I was seconded.
Okay, well, I need to make sure that's right.
I'm sorry.
Can we pause it and tell you that? I'm so glad I'm not the clerk.
Okay, so.
It's my order in the meeting, so all you would have to say is as presented, you don't need to write every point.
Yeah.
He's again.
Okay, oh, for the minutes?
As presented.
As presented in the minutes.
Right, you're using as presented.
Okay. Okay.
In perpetuity, should I add?
Yeah, that's important.
In perpetuity, yes. Until such time as a future motion has been made.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion?
All right. Do we have a second?
Yes, I second.
Oh, can we do this one?
Sorry, is ready to second, uh, any other further discussion? And a call for a vote, all the ayes?
Aye.
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 Action items.
Yep.
All right, uh, this time we will open up for public input. I don't see any other participants on Zoom. So uh, just for the record, if they are, I did check halfway through too, because there is a waiting room. So um, I did try to stay active and um, looking back to make sure that.
Okay.
So there we have that, right? So it doesn't look like there's any public input. So the next approval of minutes, um, I, I don't know if I get to do this or if.
You need to, can I make a motion or you need to? Because I got the wording down.
You got the wording down, okay.
I got the wording down.
All right, um, so. All right, so we're on the mode, we're on section eight, approving the minutes of the open space regular meeting, meeting minutes of October fourth, twenty twenty-three. Approval of the open space committee regular meeting minutes of November first, twenty twenty-three. And then we are also on approval of the open space committee regular meeting minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty-three. I am packaging it together like that because as provided, under the provisions of Massachusetts Open Meeting Law's Rule of Necessity, I would like to motion that we approve the following minutes, October fourth, twenty twenty-three of the open space regular, open space committee regular meeting, November first, twenty twenty-three, open space regular committee meeting, and December sixth, twenty twenty-three, open space regular committee meeting.
So, seconded with a question.
Clarification, go ahead, sir, Mister Gail.
Clarification on the question is, there are two members of us here who were present. That, for those, or were members at that time, two out of four. I just wanna make sure that we can approve.
Mister Holst, an answer for you, please?
At the last meeting, Chairman Gail brought this question to my attention. So I contacted Mister Patrick Higgins, who is someone that we used. When I say we, Dr. Segoff, Mr. Smith, I mean, Mister Chiggo and I. Um, for two of the three years, we were able to do it quite regularly. And this past year, he was a huge help on the issue of the police chief and his relationship with the Attorney General. Um, he gives sound advice. And what Mister Gail read in his motion is correct as the AG's office suggested that we raise it.
And that was the suggestion that they made or the suggestion that Mister, that Mister Higgins made through the AG's office?
Both. He read to me the rule of necessity.
Okay.
That's where, that's where we're basing that, is most of that, to get the sound of this, and I draw.
I just, I just, I just. And the reason I ask here is because this, where this is a recorded meeting, I wanted it to be clearly identifying where this is coming from, in case there is any feedback from the public for feeling that we shouldn't, that we're stepping out of line or anything like that. I don't disagree with this at all, but I also feel it's important for the public to understand why we're doing it this late, when there were two of us, out of the four of us who were present at the time.
The wonderful.
Thank you.
The wonderful thing of reaching out to Mister Higgins is that if he tells you how to do it, there will not be an open meeting law complaint, because ninety-nine percent of the open meeting complaints throughout this Upper South County are from him.
Yeah.
So I believe we're in good shape, um.
So we have the motion.
So we do have a motion. Can we have a second? We have clarification. Do you feel that you've been clarified?
Yes.
I agree.
Yes, I just wanted that openly.
Thank you, I do appreciate that, Mister Gail.
So do we all vote or only those who were there?
I know, we, we all voted at this point, yes, because, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so are, is there, uh, let's see, so is there any discussion, uh, we'll move it to the vote, uh, of the ayes?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, now, in our second package, I would like to, uh, we have the approval of the open space regular, the open space committee regular meeting minutes of April third, twenty twenty-four.
Mister Chairman, I would like to go on record as accusing myself from voting on the April fifth minutes since I was not present. I was not a member.
I will accept your refusal. And note for the record that we still have a forum.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of April third, two thousand twenty-four.
Your second.
Second.
Vote, all the ayes?
Aye.
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 You pass this unanimously. All right, next on our agenda, welcome back, Mister Holst. The April, the open space committee regular meeting minutes of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So who? Seconded. Vote.
All ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Action items. All right, on to setting our next meeting date. Uh, we do have the space, this room reserved, July third, five thirty. Um, it is the night before America's birthday. So uh, I do want to be respectful of everybody's time and or vacation plans. I won't put anybody on the bus, but I know.
So I, I will tell you ahead of time, I will be joining that meeting if we meet then by Zoom. Anytime we meet in the month of July, I will be in Zoom. I will be in Idaho from June twenty-fourth until the thirty-first of July.
Oh, good.
Okay.
You let, right out, you told me you were traveling.
Okay, good.
All right, so we can still meet. Um, how does everybody else feel about July third?
That's okay with me.
Good.
All right, so uh, is there a motion on the floor to set our next meeting date? I would like to uh, suggest a motion to set our next meeting day, July third, twenty twenty-four, five thirty, in front of the building.
So who?
Your second.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda is the adjournment. Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn this meeting on time tonight?
Make a motion to return.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record reply, we ended our meeting at seven P M.
Wow. Thank you.
On the dot.
Move on. Time to go to the plan.